Well, we'll get this thing kicked off. I think both boards will call roll because this isn't official, official public meeting. And then we'll do some just informal self introductions and then we can go over to the buffet line. So, I will call this meeting of the Rainbow Water District, January 11th to order. And Jody, would you please take role?
Just the Rainbow Board?
Did I say rainbow?
Yeah, no.
What did I say?
I'm sorry, I don't know.
It is rainbow. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Doug Keeler?
Present.
Lou Lanko?
Here.
Marla Casley?
Present.
Jim McGlaughlin?
Here.
And Mindy Kephart?
Here.
Thank you. And then for staff, we have Jody, Jamie somewhere, Eric, anybody else?
And our attorney Ross.
Thank you.
All right, Mark Malina, Board Chair, Springfield Utility Board. And do we need to do a formal?
Yeah. Sign us in, open up the hearing, the work session.
Right on. So Springfield Utility Board Representatives are also here. We're opening up our work session at this Thursday evening, January 11th at 5:35 PM. And then, do we need to official rule call?
No, I'll just note that all sub board members are present. Including, I don't know, you want to introduce our newest member?
My new appointee, Terry Dillon, for position two. She was appointed last night and she's here ready to get to work. And our young, black haired, good looking attorney, Matt, is here with us tonight.
All right, well, let's go ahead and do self introductions too. And if you can say again your name, what your role is with the utility that you're affiliated with, maybe how long you've been with that utility, and then how long you've been in Springfield. So I'll start. I came onto the Rainbow Budget Board in 2000. And so I've been with Rainbow on one board or another for 21 years. Now, if the map doesn't work out for you, that's because I took a little break to come over to SUB and work in their water service center for a few years with Jeff and Greg. So, let's see, I have been in Springfield for a long time now, 94, so that would be 30 years somehow.
Came to Oregon for the first time to visit in 1985. I was in the US Army and I came to visit Oregon and it was October. And had a small town Texas boy, never seen such a beautiful place. I'd never been to the ocean or the mountains, the cascades. Fell in love and decided I would come back here the rest of my life here when I exited military service, which happened in 95. So I've been in this community since then, soccer coach, football coach, cub master, scout master, all kinds of stuff of my life here. Been on the board for three years, currently Board Chair. And Doug didn't want me to effectively communicate that board chairs go first in the buffet line. I just want to make sure, he wanted me to say, because he didn't want the pressure. So, Eric?
Eric Carlson, Rainbow Water District. Been with Rainbow the 15 years in March. I moved to Oregon in 1991 from California, went to high school here, shortly after high school, joined the Army like Mark and left, traveled around, came back in 2003 and did some construction around the area and joined Rainbow in 2009.
And I'll just say Eric's also a president of a water district.
President of the Santa Clara Water District.
Mike Eisner, Springfield Utility Board. We had an awards breakfast this morning and John spoke and he remembered that he started on the sub board in 2015. I was really impressed with that, John. I don't know when I started, but I know it was after you. I read some of the Rainbow bios before I came over tonight. And I guess I'm going to have to introduce myself as a relative newbie to Springfield because I've only been here 32, 33 years.
Good evening, Lou Lanko. I am on the Rainbow Water District Board now my 14th year. We've lived here, my wife Meg and I, we're going on 20 years this year. She, she's a Thurston cult, grew up out here. And I too came out to visit for the very first time over a Labor Day weekend. And I just woke up the next morning with my coffee and said, I've been transported. And I just fell in love with it and said, we're going to move out here someday. And sure enough, six years later, poof, we just came out, just came out. I've been with the city and Public Works Department for going on five years now on this stint. I did five years previously, left for a short time and then came back. I'm currently the financial analyst for the, my Public Water Management Commission. And like I mentioned earlier, my part time, I work with the EOC for Public Works for the city. And yeah, I'm retired Navy, 26 years. I was in submarines and I counted it up one day and I spent two weeks shy of my career actually submerged underwater. And as, as you, you can tell, you don't, it didn't bother me one bit. So, just happy to be here. I'm so glad, so grateful. Everyone got together. Were able to have this meeting. I hope it's the first of several, many more to come. And I think it's a great thing that we're all here. Hope we don't wait another 75 years. Yeah, welcome. Thanks, everybody for coming.
Yeah, I'd like to echo what Lou said. Thank you. And this is a great opportunity. So, my name is Jeff Nelson. I'm General Manager of Springfield Utility Board. I've been with SUB over 25 years and in this role since 2012. And I was born at Sacred Heart. The original? Yeah.
I'm Jamie Porter. I'm Superintendent of Rainbow. I cannot say I was born in Springfield or even in Oregon. I'm one of those California transplants, but we moved out of there when I was seven. It wasn't my fault. But was living up in Portland area through junior high and high school. I graduated from Plaquemines, went off to the New England for six years, also on a submarine. And so I've been here for 13 years in this position, went down to Springfield for the job, background in public works engineering administration.
Just so people know, I worked in the front part of the submarine, Jamie worked in the back part.
Is that important?
That will have to think about.
So David Willis, I've been a board member since 2014 and moved here in 2003.
Hi, everyone. I'm Marla Casley. I am a native Springfieldian. I'm here my entire life, born at Mackenzie Blabbitt. I am currently the Board Vice Chair and I've been on the Rainbow Board since 2008. Budget Committee before that for a year, so. Spent my whole life in the Springfield community. I love it here. And we're happy for having this opportunity to meet.
Good evening. I'm Terry Dillon and I have been a board member now for six hours. And I'm very happy to be, thank you. I'm originally from Springfield and have been from Springfield my whole life with a short stint of about 25 years in Seattle to the Boeing company. And I've been back here for about seven years, eight years now.
I'm Mindy Kephart. I've been here since 1965, so I've been here a while. And I've gone off to Thurston Elementary, Middle, High School. I've been, I'm retired and I've been on the Rainbow Board. I was elected or on the Budget Committee for a year and then elected in 2023. I'm a newbie.
I'm Greg Miller, the Water Division Director at SUB. I'm born and raised in Springfield. Spent most of my life here, left a couple of years out of school, chased construction jobs out of state for a little while and made my way back to Springfield. Love to hear, live here most of my life. Went to work for SUB in 1991. This, this last June is 32 years for being at SUB. And it's been, been a great place to, to work and spent much of that time working with people from Rainbow Water District. It's been great.
Hello, I'm Jim McGlaughlin. I was born and raised right here. I was, I got onto the Budget Committee in 2014 and on the board in 2017, so that's about seven years. I spent 30 years at the City of Eugene. I retired from there from the Public Works Maintenance and Engineering Division. I'm a licensed land surveyor, but I don't do any survey. I do some land use consulting still because I think I'm just a little bit lost in my sanity. It's, it's very challenging compared to everything else. But yeah, Springfield's my home, Rainbow is great, our, our board is great. And I'm looking forward to this meeting and I've been around with a lot of the people in this room for quite a while. Thank you.
I'm Cindy Flaherty and I'm an executive assistant for Jeff in the Superintendent Board. And I've been in this position since 2017. And started with SUB in 2012. And I was born at Sacred Heart as well. Born and raised in Eugene.
My name is Jody Sanders and I'm with Rainbow. I'm the Office Manager there. I've been there for, will be 20 years in March. I did not grow, I did not grow up here. I am from North Dakota originally. Have been here since 2000 and would never leave. I love the ocean and I love mountains and it's great advice.
Thank you, everybody. We didn't go this way. Thank you.
So I'm John DeWinter on the Springfield Utility Board. I've been on the board since Mike tells me, 2015. I'm a retired attorney. I was born in Georgia, although I was raised in central Indiana. And before I came here to Oregon in 1972, I've been in Springfield since 1975, but I was immediately before I came here, I was on, in Washington DC, looking at, shall I go back to flat, corn lands in Indiana? Wherever I'd like to live in the United States. I picked Oregon, specifically Eugene Springfield.
And my name is Ross Williamson. I'm an attorney representing Rainbow. Moved to Springfield in 1998. Currently live in Eugene. Have two kids that were born at, in Eugene. I've worked with Rainbow for over a decade, but the work has been in my office for several decades. My mentor worked with Matt's mentor in that role.
Matt Dalstrom from the law firm of Lady Cox, counsel for SUB. And yeah, as Ross was alluding, I think progeny of our firm, different names has been counsel for SUB for 50 years or so.
All right, thank you. Now, we can all line up behind Mark who's going to show us where.
I ran for chairman, I'm going to show you the way.
That was Rangers, Rangers lead.
Really? I've been on that.
Isn't that the one in Pro Harbor?
No, that's not.
Oh, okay. Is. Thank you. Express my thanks to my fellow board members and staff. A lot of work went into preparing this and, you know, we've been working on this issue for a long, long time. And I feel really good about where we're at and that we're together and we're ready to, to keep moving. But I also want to thank SUB. First, for accepting the invitation. You know, it's always a little bit of a chicken and egg. So we're, Rainbow is the inviteers. So therefore it's really on us to prepare everything, including the topics. Because we wouldn't want to give SUB work to do that they're not really, you know, maybe wanting to do. But at the same time, we don't want to leave them in the dust. So it requires coordination. And so we appreciate their involvement and helping us set the agenda, putting the topics together. And then it occurred to me as I was thinking about those things, that's actually what for, for we boards, that's what our staffs do all the time, right? They're continually coordinating the work for the North system. So, and then I thought once a little bit deeper, it's sort of like being married, right? Do you over communicate, under communicate? You don't always find that sweet spot. So we don't always do it perfectly, but we have an opportunity to do it very well tonight. So thank you all. I also want to thank SUB for all you do in the community, a long history of contributions and philanthropy in many ways. But even just maybe a little bit selfishly as a customer of your electric service. I think the product is great. And I think the price is great and it's just always, you know, reliable and deliberate. So thank you for that too. So with all those nice words behind me, why aren't we meeting tonight? What's the point? And so we have the genesis and I think, you know, staff have talked about it too in the past, should we get the boards together and meet? So when we decided to do that, at some point we realized we better figure out why we're meeting. So what's the purpose, right? And we kind of went it down to just two. And then we have a couple of goals as well. So the most important purpose, see that R up there, is just getting to know each other. And as I said, our staffs do that all the time. The boards don't have that opportunity. When was the last time the SUB and Rainbow Boards met physically in person? I've never been a part of one of those meetings. I think it's happened. I've heard folklore about that. Does anybody know the answer to that? Yeah, so it's, it's been a while, but it probably has happened. So.
Probably on a blue moon.
Probably on a blue, is it a blue moon tonight?
No.
But it is a leap. Anyway, so we kind of want to just get to know each other because we feel like we can make better, better progress from that. The second R is something I'm going to look at my notes to see. Yeah, so what's the deliverable out of all this anyway? It's a new agreement, right? New intergovernmental agreement between both boards. And actually, there's a second one between both boards and the city. We'll cover that a little bit. But to get to resolution, so we want to lay the groundwork for that. So we can make some real progress tonight. Besides the relationship piece, we can kind of talk about the things that are easy to talk about, but we could talk about the tough things too, right? And so for goals, Rainbow has a couple. The first is to inform. So this is pretty complex. The system, you know, physically itself and how it works, but also the governance and how that works. And so, you know, especially for Terry, she'll have a great primer tonight, being brand new. But I think, you know, we'll learn things both ways too from each other. So on the information, I'm going to cover that a little more deeply. And it's really sort of a synopsis of the agenda under presentations. But we want to, Rainbow wants to describe its 75 year history and how we arrived here together, where SUB is involved today. So there's some background, right? We want to also describe how SUB and Rainbow are involved with the city of Springfield and how boundaries are set and how customers transfer from one utility to the other. So that's one of the talks. And then from an operational standpoint, how does the North system work? Try to do that with a kind of a two utility perspective, okay? And then the next is we want to describe some examples of how our crews work together. And they have a long history of success. And it doesn't happen always that it's just one utility or the other. Most of the time or much of the time, it involves Boeing. So there again, back to the communication. We want to acknowledge that things are changing, right? That's why we're here. New source coming on out in Thurston. That's going to mean that the way we quantify and price water is going to change. It also means that the quantity of water that Rainbow sells to SUB is going to decline, if not be eliminated completely. So that's a reality that we're dealing with, okay? So we want to talk about how does the system work in the future? And finally, as part of being informational, I want to let you know that we did some work back in 2017 with a consultant. And we sort of rechartered our organization. And we, you know, the vision, yes, the mission, yes, and then strategies that underlie that. And I don't know if we had a slide for that or not. And I guess I'm the one who has to have Jamie show me how to press them out. Is it just the left button?
As long as, if it's clicked on, it's free.
I'm not going to belabor this. Okay, well, you probably can't read it anyway. I'll just focus on. Yeah, you have it in your handouts. Thank you. So, you know, customer value, making sure our, our customers get a good deal, that we provide safe and adequate water supply always. The third one, our financial health is critical to us. We need to operate efficiently and we need to operate profitably. Strategic relationships, we believe in a win-win arrangement with the partners that we do business with. And you're going to find out it's more than just, for us, it's more than just SUB and Rainbow together. We have many partners, including districts that we contract with and others as well. And then finally, people, right? We have to take care of our staff. We have to develop them, keep them safe. And in order to achieve any of this. And then there's some bullets below. Okay, so that's what I want to say as far as information. And again, now I can't go back, but should have got, anyway, you have the agenda in your packet there. So a couple of things on goals. Well, attention is to inform. The last goal is how we actually conduct ourselves in the meeting. So it's to refrain. And by refrain, I mean we want to keep our information sharing at the right level. We could easily get into weeds in detail and never leave here tonight. And so we have to kind of self check ourselves and make sure that we don't get too deep, but that we do get as deep and involved as we need to in the the technicalities of the various subjects. The other thing we want to refrain from is negotiating. So we have some things to decide at some point, but that's not the purpose for Rainbow tonight. We feel that those discussions at that level is best done between our staff, the boards and form staff. Staff does that work on our behalf, okay? It doesn't mean that we can't talk about those difficult or touchy things. We should talk about them. And there was time for that at the bottom of the agenda for more open discussion after the presentations. But we're not quite ready yet to make any commitments tonight. So so basically, let's not get too detailed and let's not make any deals yet. So Mark, did you have anything you might want to add for a goal for tonight?
I think you pretty much covered it. I think we're going on the right path.
Okay, good. So with that, we can kind of get into the informational topics unless there's other questions, Jeff, comments?
Oh, great presentation, great kickoff. So thank you.
You're welcome. Sweet. So I believe you're up next. And if, oh, by the way, as far as our formality here, I think we can take, for me, and I don't know about the guys, but we can take questions as we go. We'll also have a little period after we're done with these presentations, when we kind of open it up for discussion and comments on that material before we get more broad based.
So yeah, you see, within the hour, we have scheduled for staff presentations, you know, we have five bullets. And so we're a little bit flexible on the time as we move through there, but we tried to make it a manageable hour of information and then to open it up for more discussion and reflection on some of what we're able to share tonight. Rainbow will kick off each section, but then SUB will have a chance to contribute and add your perspective. So, you know, first off, the history of the North system, you know, we have this unique water system. And how did it evolve that way? And why is there a north and a west and an east? And, you know, it's this, it's unusual. Well, there is some reason for that. And so let's go back in time and try to understand that better. The Warehouser played a, played a part in that. So our story here in this room began 75 years ago when groups of citizens banded together to call for elections with Lang County. They formed two water districts to supply water to this growing community. It was August 1949. End of World War II was a very recent memory and the people who were later to be known as baby boomers were happy to leave the warriors behind, build houses, settle down. Warehouser came to town, timber industry was taken off and new houses were springing up. So they built the new mill and hundreds of jobs came to Springfield. So Springfield's population nearly tripled between 1940 and 1950. The Rainbow Water District was incorporated August 22, 1949. So as you see in the calendars, this is our 75th anniversary year. And we were formed to provide water service to approximately 300 customers in North Springfield. So the McKenzie Highway Water District was formed in 1950, just a few months down the road, to serve East Springfield, present day Thurston. And so these two special districts were serving the north and the east. The two water districts shared an attorney, they shared a manager, and system construction began in 1950 under the direction of the original Superintendent Jay Hicks. And right there, he is operating a valve to buy water from EWEB. So that was the first metered connection there at Fifth Street. And so water from EWEB was supplying those original 300 customers for Rainbow. And the water district at the time just had to install 40,000 feet of pipe. They didn't have any wells to deal with, any tanks to deal with. They were just taking EWEB's water to get things started. Lots of activity. And again, EWEB was the source, but the two water utilities started talking about, how could we do that different? 1956, the utility said, we would like to be in control of our own water source. And so they searched for a wealth field and settled upon the Warehouser property location. It wasn't Warehouser at the time. The water utilities got an easement from Margaret Morris. And then like the next year, she sold it to Warehouser. And so it's known as the Warehouser property, but it wasn't originally. So after six years of buying water from EWEB, the two utilities had their own sources. And so that's how things got started. 1957, 24 inch transmission main, control house were built to be able to control those wells. And so that became Rainbow's office. We've lived there ever since. The metal desk Jay Hicks is sitting at, we still have in our building. We're still using that today since 1957. So we recite. 1959, we had our first storage tank. And so Rainbow looked for property, top of Kelly Butte. At the time, that existing tower was a Pacific Power and Light structure that SUB later took on, took down. But Kelly Butte reservoir was built. The construction on the right side there, you can see in the black and white photo, years later, we've repainted it. We learned how to use color. SUB has a Kelly Butte pump station right next to that that serves your customers up on the hilltop that need the additional pressure. So by 59, we had a well field, we had a reservoir piping to connect them. The wells pumped directly up to the tanks, to the tank on top of the hill, and it supplies about 90 pounds per square inch of pressure. And so that's great for pushing water out of fire hydrants. Greg and Eric could say firefighters love that. So 1960 comes along and Springfield Utility Board had been formed and purchased the McKenzie Highway Water District, what was Thurston. And so acquiring those assets gave SUB half ownership of that Warehouser well field and we've been partners since that day. So the Springfield area at this time had Rainbow to the north, SUB to the east, and Pacific Power and Light was still serving in what we call the west, more of the downtown area. Between 60 and 75, we had these joint operations going on with these three entities. SUB was expanding their electric program and you could add detail there. You were, SUB was working on the Thurston well field about the same time we were working on the Chase well field in the 60s. So we were adding more sources, diversifying supply. By 75, SUB had bought out Pacific Power and Light and doubled your water customers. So SUB was growing rapidly. Rainbow continued to supply in the north. And we were serving both our county customers, you see the dash line there, and city customers at the time through contractual agreements. In the 80s, Rainbow added three more wells. In the eighties, Rainbow added three more wells, two for Interstate Five and one along Q Street. We added additional storage with the original Mo reservoir. That was only two million gallons. We worked with Sub in things like the nineteen eighty-three Spring Fest Parade, and we have that in your calendar too. That was just such a cool picture. We supported the growth and economic development. I think this trade delegation, if I remember right, they were looking to like do a soy sauce factory. I think that's what it was. So they were very interested in the water supply. So. Springfield today still has these three zones, but Sub is actively working to merge those. And we'll go into more detail on how that works within the urban growth boundary. But I wanted to review some history and help everybody understand why we have these three zones, how it started. And, you know, we continue to be in the north. That's where we've been. Rainbow Wells supply water that flows through both Rainbow and Sub pipes in North Springfield. And our interconnection is an important part of how our operation staff works together. We supply water from West Centennial all the way up to Gateway Mall, McKenzie, um, the River Bend Hospital. And. You know, there are sub customers, but you're, we're assisting you by supplying water under the current situation. And so we definitely feel a partnership there, even though sometimes that's behind the scenes. So Rainbow actively works through your staff. For the present needs, and we're talking about how to do that in the future as well. So Jeff or Greg, anything you wanna contribute?
Greg, if you wanna highlight anything on the water system.
We, we timed that for a mouthful.
I don't know, Jamie's done a good job of, of that, and historical, uh, background to the systems. And what he's described in the North system and. These breadsticks are very true. But in all my time here, it's, uh, of course, the west, east and west systems for Sub were established where I started, so. And then we're system too, although some of those Rainbow areas have shrunk some as annexation has occurred out there, and those customers have come over to Sub. But we've continued to, um. Work operationally with Rainbow over the years, like Jamie talked about, the systems are interconnected. In many places, a lot of, a lot of those places are flowing. Providing service to sub customers. Rainbow customers back to sub customers flowing through the same water mains and providing service and fire protection in those areas, and so. Um, that's kind of been my background to this, to this point.
And we will definitely have time for questions later, but any board members, um, any questions while we're on this?
Good question. We did, so what, when did, uh, some west take over from PPL?
It was, I saw a note in one of your public education pieces, it was your silver, silver anniversary, nineteen seventy-five. Well, we'll keep moving if that's fine, if there are no more questions, and we'll always come back to stuff too. So now we're just gonna move from the shared history to talk about how both utilities are acted upon by outside forces. Particularly Oregon's land use laws, but we both are impacted by what the city of Springfield does and, and their processes. I showed that picture of the three colors for the three different zones earlier, but now I've zoomed back out, you can see the whole thing. So in nineteen seventy-one, Register Guard article. Then Superintendent of Rainbow Cecil Chase stated that the district had reached a natural boundary to the north, the McKenzie River. And the district would eventually decline after vacant land within the district had developed. So I mean, this was a known thing long ago that we were geographically constrained. What has changed is how fast annexations have occurred, and that's a city function. And we've, both utilities have been trying to wrestle with how that works. In nineteen seventy-one, when this article came out, Sub still had no water facilities west of twenty-eighth is my understanding. Um, because the PPL buyout hadn't happened until seventy-five. Nineteen seventy-one was when the first intergovernmental agreement between Sub, Rainbow and the city was adopted. Helping define service boundaries and procedures for transferring customers upon annexation. Due to the perception that annexations would occur rapidly, the seventy-one IGA. Um, is where it first came up, the idea of potential operations transferring from Rainbow to Sub. Um, there wasn't a specific timeline, but it was when Rainbow shrunk. If it was down to sixty percent of Rainbow customers within the city limits. And so this was the assumption at the time that annexations were imminent and we were shrinking quickly. And so there, there was that flavor in the agreement back in seventy-one. Nineteen eighty-one, a new IGA was formed, adopted between Sub and Rainbow. And this further tried to define and provide for an orderly dissolution as some of these. Boundary adjustments, like Greg mentioned, were happening, annexations were occurring. Rainbow in the nineteen eighty-one agreement was still serving city properties in the annexed areas. But they were doing so with recognition of the rates, policies and standards. That Sub had in place, as if they were sub customers, Rainbow was trying to work under that framework. The Southern Rainbow Boards were tasked with meeting at least twice per year. So if we go back long enough, I think you all did meet, but it's been a while. So, so I'm glad to have it back again. Um, the goal of the meetings was to discuss and review programs and capital improvement plans. And this agreement nineteen eighty-one was to continue until such time, Sub and Rainbow mutually agreed to transfer Rainbow operations to Sub. Uh, alternatively, there was a trigger if seventy percent of Rainbow customers were inside the city limits. Any transfer of operations would allow at least a five-year notice, so there were some thresholds in there that helped govern that. Because the thought was this is going to happen soon, that was where there was some mention of a transfer of employees. Uh, with the transfer of operations at that time. Nineteen ninety-two. The intergovernmental agreement between Sub and Rainbow was updated again. And during this update, Rainbow was no longer serving the city customers directly. But a program was developed whereby Rainbow sold the water to Sub at a wholesale cost, allowing Sub to serve those thousands of customers that we transferred over. And so that was a negotiated agreement, wasn't an easy thing, but the two utilities had worked that out way back in ninety-two. The IGA went into a lot of detail regarding assets, joint operations. Describing how to coordinate water quality, system maintenance, repairs, and again, it had sections on transfer personnel. There was no expiration date, and that's been what we've been living under for thirty-two years. We both recognized that that was a long time ago, and some things have changed, and so that's why Rainbow's been. Willing to come to the table and talk about what the future looks like. Couple of years later, after ninety-two and nineteen ninety-five, an urban services agreement between Sub, Rainbow and the city was adopted to comply with state law. And show how the utilities were coordinating the provision of services within the urban growth boundary, the UGB. It was agreed Rainbow would continue as the provider for customers within its service boundary, while Sub would be responsible. To plan to serve as the future provider for the entire UGB. The city was recognized as a responsible party for land use planning within the UGB, including those Lane County areas served by Rainbow. Um, within that UGB, both utilities would jointly develop and maintain a master plan. And Rainbow in the nineteen ninety-two agreement agreed to. Cease water distribution functions if we drop down to four hundred customers, but again, no, no expiration date. So that's been part of the history. It's been tied to what happens, not a specific date. Seven Rainbow agreed to meet every five years to update the master plan and discuss a potential merger. I don't know that we followed through on discussing merger as much, but staff has worked together on the master plans and we've kept it current. Rainbow is very aware of our position within the North system. Um, we know we are limited, we don't have a lot of development activity. A development comes in and wants to build an apartment complex, they can't do that on a septic system. County will not permit it, they need to connect the city sewer, they need to annex to be able to do that. So Sub gets the bulk of all the new development, Rainbow has pretty much just stayed in size all these years. Uh, we've lost a few customers here and there because of septic system failures, and individually they need to connect the sewer. Or somebody with a larger lot does want to develop to a higher density. But for the most part, our customers, they were happy where we're at, we just wanna stay here and maintain. And we've even added a few customers where somebody with a large lot can split and add one house on their lot, and we gained a customer. And so we've been close to twenty-four hundred customers since nineteen ninety-two. And so this big drop in our, our customer count never happened. It still could happen in the future, we, neither of us know that. Um, we have provision to add accessory dwelling units like Sub does, but we are ninety-nine percent residential. All the businesses are already part of the city, they need to sort of, the larger apartment complexes are already in the city. But we already active by this growth in the city, Marco Lomitos is a good example. All those hundreds of houses going in right now, Rainbow is supplying the water to Sub, so Sub can provide for those customers. Down the road, you're making more water and you have plans for that, but we've been stressing, cause we have an obligation to take care. Of our sub customers, you're our largest customer, and. Keep the wells running and try to maintain until that future day. And so that is this transition we're at, where. We're not gonna keep trying to add sources and build for this future day. We recognize Sub is taking that load. For your own customers, and we're just working through that transition period. We still have an obligation to supply and. Until we work out a new agreement, we're, we're honoring what we have, and we continue to enjoy our relationship. Um, and work with our sub partners and our city partners. We have had to make adjustments in boundaries, so there's been little tweaks, and that's one thing we want to help communicate. Is, it's not just going through one meter. I mean, we are so tied together, one lot changes hands, that boundary changes, is constantly in flux. There is no way to separate our systems. We are probably the most unique water system in all of the state of Oregon, and we've had to learn to work together because of that. We continue to supply our own customers and selling extra water to Sub for decades under this wholesale contract. It's helping supply most of the water for North Springfield. Sub, um, has bought eighty percent of the water that Rainbow makes. So you are getting the vast majority of our water at a heavily discounted price. And so that is something we're having to take on the adjustment for. And we charge more for our customers and make up for their loss of revenue and make adjustments here. Our board's been willing to take a step down that path, but it is challenging. As our geographic service area is limited and we don't have a lot of development, our staff has been able to invest extra time in being consultants. And so we've become technical experts for some of these small systems near Springfield. And so it's less than ten percent of our business, but it does allow us to build and maintain connections with both the cities of Eugene and Springfield and the county. So Rainbow's position as a special district, one foot in the city, one foot in the county. It's allowed us to play an important role in community emergency preparedness. We were able to dispatch staff and equipment and help. Um, like during the holiday farm fire, because we had these connections upriver and we had access to city folks with more resources, and that's been part of our little market. Working for these small systems has been part of our strategic vision, as was shared on our, our plan there. It provides some supplemental income, not a lot. It helps us strengthen our relationships with our neighbors, which is very important to us. But again, Sub is our largest customer and we value our relationship with you. Um, we have a lot of shared history, we want to continue to seek ways to maintain that. Even as you need us less in the future, and we're trying to recognize that. Jeff, here you go, your turn.
We'll, we'll get to more of the, uh, opportunities that Rainbow has had with Sub. And, uh, vice versa in terms of, of projects and, and opportunities that we've, we've worked on together. Uh, and we'll get to, I think, a future slide that shows sources and gives more context, but just as, as a high level. Um. Uh, as, as I've understood the agreements and, and they've, uh, looked at the history. And through time, uh, there has been communication. Uh, uh, not necessarily guaranteed or anything, but just, uh. Uh, in the media, as you point out, like, uh, Rainbow will transition away, Rainbow will transition away. I think that from Sub's perspective, uh, uh, we, we don't see that happening anytime soon, and that is fine. Uh, and so, uh, I think we looked at at one point. Based on the number of annexations that were occurring, that ultimately we'd take about a hundred and fifty years for, uh, for Rainbow to fully kind of. Transition, and so that's the time horizon now that, at least from my perspective, uh, others may have a different. Kind of concept, but we, we've talked about, wow, it's a hundred and fifty years. I think we need to kinda revisit all these assumptions that we've had. Mentoring into these agreements. And. Uh, I wanna recognize, uh, Rainbow's distribution system. Uh, the, the source, uh, the, the storage, I mean, you have done. An outstanding job providing a valuable resource for the Springfield community. And, um, that, I don't think that can be understated as, as well, uh, while, while we're talking about. Uh, just general source on a maybe annual basis. Uh, I would like to also express appreciation for Rainbow's efforts to. Continue to, uh, have high-quality maintenance of some sources that in the North system. At this point, Sub does rely on, on a capacity basis, especially in the summertime, we really have some peak days. Uh, right now, our system doesn't have the capability to deliver water into that North system on those peak days, and so. Uh, I, I just wanna acknowledge that. Uh. There's just a lot of value in Rainbow's system. And that's a testimony to the board of Rainbow and the, and the, the care and attention that staff's given to the system.
Thank you. I mean, it, it has been a partnership, and. By us taking care of the North system, hopefully we've allowed Sub to focus and help grow out some of your other. Areas and, but you know, time is changing. We don't have the capacity to help Springfield grow as much as it needs to, and so Sub stepping into that. So we're trying to work out that level of detail, how do we do it next, so. So next, uh, we want. Yeah, questions?
I would like to ask a question, and of course, I think it's better suited to Ross, who just left the table, but he stayed in the room. Um, I think it's sort of, i- it's relevant to this topic that we're covering now, and that is just. We do have another IGA besides the one between Sub and Rainbow. We have one among Sub, Rainbow and the city. And that deals with how customers migrate from one utility to the other, and I say that generically, but it's almost always from Rainbow. To Sub, but so there's a process there, it's annexation, but it's also withdrawal, and so maybe Ross, you could give us. I didn't ask you ahead of time, but just the, the one paragraph or two on how that works, or maybe that's Jamie. For those who may not know, I think you may have forgotten.
Sure, so i- if we have a property, uh, in the UGB that is. Either currently served by Rainbow or could be served by Rainbow and is undeveloped. Uh, and so I guess maybe a, a good scenario is, uh. Uh, that they have a, a failing septic system, uh, or they want to develop. And the county won't let them install a new septic system, so that means. Uh, the county is gonna force them to annex, and the city is going to allow them to annex, and so that at, at the city level. In terms of city land use, the city says, okay, you can come into the city. And then, uh, as a city, we provide urban, urban services, and that means city water, so. Uh, s- uh, and, and city sewer, uh, and then the city, that's the annexation process is, is taking in. And then there's a separate withdrawal process. If they were currently a Rainbow customer, there is a separate city process that says, okay, now. We're going to, as a, as a city council order, we're ordering this property withdrawn from Rainbow and given to the city, i.e. Sub. Uh, and so that is, that is the, the process, how it goes, uh, and it, and it generally is a two-step process, so it, it's not, the annexation doesn't always. Uh, equal withdraw, um, but in, in our community, it almost always does. Um, uh, the city is going to say, yeah, it makes sense, uh, if you're inside the city. Uh, that we're gonna provide city water for that property, and so then, uh, we withdraw that property, but. Um, that's the, the legal side of it, but the underground, the pipes don't really change. So it's just, it's almost like, it's almost a, a Jody and Cindy function in terms of, uh. Billing, uh, and so instead of, uh, Rainbow setting, sending the water bill, uh, it's Sub sending the water bill. It's, it's the same pipes.
No, that's a good, that's a good description.
I think that's a great, uh, explanation. And one of the things that we're seeing emerge, we've, uh, dealt, been dealing with is not annexa- annexation of private property, but annexations of right-of-way, so. Maybe you could talk about. maybe you could talk about, I, I don't want to point to you. I'll, I'll point to, to Matt. Now, maybe you could talk about uh what happens when the county says, hey, City of Springfield, we'd like to transfer this right of way to you. Uh and, and the, the circumstances around that.
Well, I don't think that the process alters that much from, from what Ross just laid out. There's not any difference in staff work from my understanding of what's out there. Um it's just an understanding of where boundary lines that you've seen on some of these maps of the dotted lines are being moved to, which under the Urban Services Agreement can change who is in charge of what moving forward. Cooperatively still, um amongst the staff, but who's taking the responsibility for certain actions might change.
We have a good slide that's gonna show some of that later on.
And, and that, that transfer, the withdrawal of providers. If, if an annexation is completed on April second, under state law, the transfer water providers um could include who's paying the property taxes for a parcel, and they need time at the county level to update the tax maps. And so we do not actually change customers until July one. And if that annexation happens on April second, ninety days is not enough for the county, so it doesn't happen until the following July one. And so we could keep the customer for fifteen months after annexation before the withdrawal is completed and that transfer customers. And so timing development, when they're building, you know, all that, there is a lot of coordination at the staff level, and that's just a nuance. Um but we've worked with that, we recognize that. If it is a street, right away, as Jeff mentioned. So those pipes within the street, then all of a sudden, now it's not a Rainbow pipe anymore, it's a Sub pipe. But it's still Rainbow customers connected to Sub's pipe, and so if there's maintenance on there, both of our crews have to be talking, we have to work together. It's a little more to logistics and that gives gray, gray hairs.
Chat about that, that third element of the fire district, which the same thing happens to, but that's between the city, fire group service, and it isn't a water service, but it's still us.
Sure. Yeah, Rainbow also has a fire protection function. So as an ORS two sixty-four Domestic Waters Plate District, we have the ability to also provide fire protection for our customers. And our customers voted to do so in nineteen fifty-two. And so we collect property taxes and we use that money and hire the city to be our fire provider. If they are annexed into the city, it's still the same fire department, still taking care of their house. All of a sudden, it's a tax bill from the city instead of Rainbow, so there is a transition at the property tax level. Um but our board also oversees fire operations, even though we hire that out.
I mean, it's even a more of a, of an invisible or virtual service that is only tied to that one function of taxation.
So Eric, you ready?
Sure.
And Greg, you'll back him up? Are you guys a tag team?
Just got passed off.
All right. If anybody wants to get up and get a piece of that tiramisu, please get up, I'll keep talking, I don't mind. I almost did it, but I knew I was gonna get called up there, so.
Mike says it's good.
Is it?
Take one for Eric.
Yeah, there you go. Or don't, I probably don't need it. North System Storage and Treatment. We have five sources that feed into the north system. Two reservoirs with a combined storage of five million gallons. And all locations add chlorine for disinfection, and depending on the pH of the stores, um we inject sort of hydroxide to raise the pH of that water. Here's a map of um Springfield. You'll see here, this is just Rainbow sources, with the exception of the Warehouser Well Field, sometimes you heard, referred to as Waco. That's just abbreviation. Um that's half owned by Sub and half owned by Rainbow. As you see, we've been very creative on the naming of our sources. All the way up in the north is our I-five well field. It's right along I-five. The Chase Well Field, kind of right there in the middle, right along the McKenzie River, uh is named after the Chase family who owned that property, that, that well field was uh constructed. We have the Q Street Well, which is kind of across from Fred Meyer on Q Street. Q Street. And then last one I said, the Warehouser Well Field, that's directly east of our office on Forty-second Street. Um sometimes you'll see it if you're coming from Thurston into Springfield, you can see it off to your right-hand side. As you can see, the Rainbow sources are concentrated on that north part of Springfield. Um even Q Street still considered the north, and you'll see on the next slide. This is basically the same map, it's bringing up Sub's sources on top of there. And you can see here that uh Sub sources move off to the east and south uh from the north system. Um and Greg, anything to add to that?
Uh no.
Is the size of the bubble indicative of how much they provide?
I thought it was at first, but I think Lad just made it big enough to cover all those wells. There's a lot of wells there.
Yeah, like the area.
Eric, I guess we could, yeah, Lad just put those circles on to highlight the areas those wells are located. Um the one, of course, Sportsway to the north is a single well. Maya and SP Wells are both single well sites. Uh the Warehouse of Well Field, Eric mentions one we can share jointly with Rainbow. Uh we'll land it to the south there with a slow sand filtration plant. There's eleven wells at that location, along with our treatment plant. Then out to the east, uh Thurston Well Field has eight wells. Platte has uh two individual wells. Um they all are combined and treated uh together. And that is a site where the future Thurston Treatment Plant is going to be constructed um coming up in the next uh few years.
I think Sub could put on a clinic on water treatment. Um when that membrane plant comes online, you'll have pretty much every method of water treatment there besides a traditional.
Convention.
Yeah. He would take care of that over there, so we can go do a tour. Um next slide. All right, here we go. We're showing both Rainbow sources and Sub sources. Uh Rainbows are uh circled in, in blue, um so you can kind of see they're more the same. All right. It's a busy slide. Uh what we're seeing here is Springfield. I don't know if you can see, there's a pink magenta and then there's a blue. The pink magenta is representing the Rainbow customers, the blue are Sub customers. Now, that's not saying where our water travels, that's just actual customer um areas. Pipe ownership, thank you. I was gonna touch right here. Uh this is a blown-up area of pipe ownership. And uh what I really want you guys to see here, once again, Rainbow's in the pink or magenta, Sub's in the blue. You can see here that a, a single transmission or distribution main can transition from ownership from Sub to Rainbow, back to Sub. And it's also not uncommon to have a Sub main with Rainbow customers coming off it and vice versa. A Rainbow main with Sub customers coming off it. And that really, that really comes together when anytime we're doing leaks. Um customer service calls, uh locating. There's a number of things. I mean, it happens almost on a daily basis. I'm interacting with some member of uh, uh Greg's team about either locate requests and how that works. And this changes almost annually. Uh like we were talking about a street being, or a right-of-way being annexed. That can happen without notice. Next thing you know, in July, that pink rainer will then turn uh blue. And all that means for Rainbow is that just fewer meters we have to read, the water production stays exactly the same. Anything to add on that, Greg?
Well, I'm glad you blew that up. The map right before is, is pretty hard for you. You're even familiar with looking at those maps and it, it looks very familiar to you, but for someone who's not used to looking at those distribution system maps, it'd be kind of confusing, but this is a really good illustration here of how interconnection in that system works, and this is a real small snapshot of that. So as Eric mentioned on, on service, uh calls, customer service calls, uh main breaks, outages, uh things that our after-hours crews are responding to. We're working with each other, communicating with each other all the time. And uh I think there, there's probably not a day goes by that even during a regular business hours and normal operations that Sub and Rainbow staff isn't working together in the north system to run this system.
Like for instance, uh yes.
What we have to add to what Greg just said is um our current documents, and there are several documents that together sort of comprise the IGA, but the ones that, you know, we're working under right now. That one section is the one that I could understand the best, is how you guys work on those uh, you know, upset maintenance conditions and what you need to do. So we can do better, I think, with other parts of the IGA to make it more readable and logical and linear. But that's the one part that uh actually worked for me.
One thing I wanted to point out here was this green line, blue-green teal, that's the city-county boundary. Um and that dictates typically where those mains start. Um and if you can see, like for instance, like right here, if a contractor was working here, they'd call them utility locate request. Well, Sub and Rainbow will show up, and we're probably gonna talk on the phone before we get there. Like, do you know what they're doing? Uh yeah, they're just replacing, you know, some plumbing in the house, or they're putting a fence in. Uh but if it's a major construction process, we might be working side by side overseeing what they're doing, making sure that they're protecting our facilities.
All right, just add, don't get stuck on the fact that the green line is in the middle of a lot. It really is on the lot line, but just from the CAD graphing, that's a way they can separate boundaries and show it.
All right, more history. Nineteen sixty-five. What was happening nineteen sixty-five? First ground combat in Vietnam. Joe Namath was signed with the New York Jets. And Sonny and Cher made their first TV appearance. Also, Springfield was actively growing. You saw that line from uh nineteen thirty to nineteen fifty. Well, that line didn't get any shallower from fifty to sixty or from sixty to seventy. It wasn't until the mid-seventies when that line started flattening out. Um Chase one, two wells were drilled, followed shortly behind with Chase three and four. And Chase, our Chase Well Field provides about two and a half million gallons a day to the north system. Does anyone walk their dog in that area? Chase Well Field, do you, you walk your dog there? Chase Well Field's kind of in the tenth and Hayden Ridge area. Um you might know the subdivision as uh McKenzie Crest subdivision. It's right behind there. It's a fa- it's a favorite dog walking spot. Mo Reservoir. Originally built in nineteen sixty-five in conjunction with that Chase Well Field, they put all that source in, now they need the place to put it. That one million gallon reservoir wasn't enough, so they built a two million gallon reservoir up um off Vitas Lane. Uh you can kind of see it if you're going down Marcola Road, you can see it off to your left before you start heading towards Marcola. Um in nineteen ninety-six, new Mo Reservoir was built and the size was doubled. Originally it was planned as a three million gallon tank, however, Sub chose to pitch in and then cr- the size was increased to four million gallons. Now, Rainbow owns seventy percent of that tank, Sub owns thirty percent. Right, anything about that?
Does that equate to Rainbow owning seventy percent of the water and Sub thirty percent of the water?
No, water with Sub is a really only um measured by meters, so customer sales.
It's Rainbow's property, but Sub bought a third of the volume for their own storage.
I guess maybe you, maybe you're going to mention the pump station.
I wasn't going to, but if you would, please do.
So as, as development has uh built up around Mo Reservoir up there, and those areas have been uh um annexed into the city and becomes Sub customers. Uh those, some of those are at uh hydraulic level that uh needs provided by a booster pump station that Sub owns on-site on this Mo Reservoir site.
Very similar to Kelly.
Very, yeah, very much the same.
So um when I moved into our neighborhood, shortly after that, there was a lot of construction around there. So was that the pump station that, that was?
Like, what year did you move in?
Well, two thousand and three.
So two thousand and three was probably, the road used to stop, right? When I started working here, the road stopped right there by that transformer and didn't go anywhere else. There was no road.
Do you know something, Greg? David, David's in Ambleside, or, oh, okay, it was part of the first level service. It was when, when River Heights built up, that we had to add second, second level service, and that pump station was constructed.
I thought you just did a lot of work with the, maybe just painted it that.
I did just paint it. Um it looks beautiful, but uh we did do a bunch of work uh two thousand and fourteen, fifteen. Yeah, I have a slide. I'll touch that. I-five wells. Not what you look like, what they normally look like. That building has been removed for um a rehab we did. But what you see here is, on the left is a motor control panel. Basically, the um, the electrical system for that well. That's a two-hundred horse uh motor and a um vertical turbine pump that's all the way down about two hundred and I think two hundred and fifty feet on this well. Maybe it's three fifty. I can't remember. Um and then it comes out and it goes to distribution, um to the distribution, to the transmission main, then to the distribution system. It was constructed in nineteen seventy-four. Um in nineteen seventy-four, uh the show Happy Days debuted. And Richard Nixon resigned. So there's some things nineteen seventy-four. Uh Springfield was continuing to grow and we needed more water, so they put those in. I-five, the I-five wells are our two largest wells. Um our biggest producer that produces great water. Um they do about four to four and a half million gallons a day. Q Street well. See that building coming off?
Yeah. And with respect to the wells, um is there a timeline on production as far as will they be able to provide uh water or water per gallon or?
I'm not quite understanding your question, I'm sorry.
Well, when I was down in South Texas a few years ago, they were having problems with wells running out of water very soon. And so is there, is there a threat to that? Uh if, and if there is, what are reserve options?
So if Water Resources does its job, it shouldn't be a threat. Um they manage the water rates in our area and um over pumping. If you're asking about over pumping, it's not an issue with those wells. Um it's a alluvial aquifer, very similar to the Sportsway well. Uh heavy gravels down below, it's very predictable on drawdown on that well. Um the water moves very freely in that area. For instance, uh Sub can see when we start these wells up, they'll see the water level, their wells change and vice versa. Uh we'll have the waters, the, the wells running, and if Sub starts up Sportsway, we'll see that effect on those wells. So it's, it's um it's highly, what is that, transmissible, trans, trans? Something along that.
Individual wells can have more problems.
Yeah.
Um this Q Street well has some layers in there and the water can't recharge it as fast, and so we have to limit the flow rate. And over time, wells will decline in production because they will start to clog up their screens requiring more maintenance.
Um Q Street well, it has a building on top of it, it's very similar to the I-five wells. And you can see those I-five wells, if you're leaving Springfield, heading north, you can see them on the right. You'll see three buildings. Two um are the wells, they're separate. In the middle is the control room where we add chlorine and monitor flow. Um the Q Street well commissioned in nineteen seventy-nine, it's a single well, produces about um a million gallons a day. Um not much to say about Q Street.
If your customer, if you, if your organization loses customers due to annexation, are you, is, is the organization financially augmented in any way by the annexing uh power?
We tend to be on the losing side of that deal. Um and so it will result in some cost increases for the remaining customers, so that is part of the challenge.
If you could think about it, let's say you are a Rainbow customer. You're gonna do an addition on your house, you're gonna annex to the city, we're charging you a rate for that water. You join Sub. All of a sudden, you're now paying Sub for that water. Um you're not paying our retail prices, Sub's taking the uh the uh wholesale price. And so there is some losing there. The same amount, we're making the same amount of water. All right. Chase Treatment Plant, that's a handsome pillar. The uh constructed in two thousand seventeen. We have a well, um Chase number two that was deemed to be under the influence of surface water. Very similar to Thurston number two, constructed right about the same time, um both along the McKenzie River. State makes us do NPAs on a period basis. State makes us do NPAs on a period basis, we did NPAs and the count came up um too high. The, the particle count came up too high for Chase two, so they required us to filter it. We built this filter plant uh in two thousand and seventeen, uh it's only for one well. In the process of, of building that filter, filter plant, we also added a corrosion control facility in addition to that building. To raise the pH of the water, all the water leaving Chase to better match up with Sub's needs. Um, for you don't know is Sub, ba- based on their customer count, has a requirement to optimize their, um please, if I say something wrong, please just jump in Greg. Uh to optimize their pH levels, um so Sub being one of our largest customers, we went ahead and provided for that. So that, that water was better balanced into the north system.
Low pH is acidic, think Flint, Michigan, so we raised the pH to help fix that on the water providers' side.
Greg, Greg, is it, because of the quantity of customers you have, that because your, your, your limits and your, your expense are a bit more stringent, right? It's just based on, yeah, yeah. Not, not, yeah, just population.
The regulations recognize that a very small community can't do the things, they don't have the resources of a large community. So it's sort of a tiered thing for many, many of the treatment processes, based on population.
Hey studies, how we work together. Yeah, I'm gonna preface this, I wish I did a better job of, of talking how we work together. Cause no matter what I say, I think I'm gonna underestimate how often we um interact and how fluid it is. Um, start off, the Sportsway Wells is a backup to the north system and we use it that way. Um, it's basically our, our reserve well for the north system. We have um control features that if. Demand is increasing, res- reservoirs are falling, um we talk with, with Sub's production on where, what's a good point for us to have Sportsway come on. Um, and that changes throughout the year. Um, we could have another situation in the system and we need Sub's Sportsway well to come on sooner. Um, and so we work together on that, uh it's basically, it helps change the direction of our uh reservoir trends. Uh, so our water level doesn't get so low in the reservoirs, um helps maintain that pressure in the system. Um, I'll just move on. I five Sportsway Wells, like I was saying, um you can see here, I five one and two up top, Sportsway further down near the bottom. Um, I'll point it out in case you can't see it. That's Sportsway there, right outside of Royal Caribbean Cruise Lines, Wells one and two, uh they share a transmission main. Sub Rainbow one and two are coming down, they pass right next to Sportsway well, Sportsway dumps into it and we share an entry point. Um, it's a joint, jointly used entry point. We work together on the sequencing of those wells, like I said, on on and off points, uh also on water quality. Um, it's, it's not often, but it does happen if um. Sub's water quality crew is sampling, doing the required samples of distribution system, or Rainbow for that matter. And we come up with what we call a hot sop, a sample, a sample positive for coliform. We're then required to sample all sources that could be feeding in that area. And so that's a big coordination with us, that means a well that might have been running two days ago, it's not running now. All those wells have to be turned on, they have to be flushed and then samples have to be coordinated, uh delivered to the lab for our joint system. Anything to add to that Greg?
No, but just even on some of our regular uh scheduled sampling that we do for those source sites and the combined uh composite sampling and stuff we do for a variety of different samples. That takes coordination with Southern Rainbow, also operational coordination to run these sources and um. Our, our groups work through that together uh all the time.
Two thousand and fourteen, um that's inside of Mo Reservoir. Um, reservoirs are kind of neat because of their shape. You really can't get a appreciation how big they are when you're standing outside, uh cause you can only see so far around, you only see so, so high. Even when you get on top, they look big, they're like, ah, it's big, you get inside, they're big. Uh, they're. Yeah, that's a, that might be me, I don't know, that's, that's.
That's my view.
Yeah, it's about my size. Um, they uh, it's huge, it's huge inside, uh like I said, it was constructed nineteen ninety-six. During that seismic um upgrade, it really got a chance, we've been in there and cleaned it before, but um we really wanted to get some inspections in that process. And uh I was really impressed on how well it's held up. Greg and I just did a tour at uh EWEB uh last month of a new eight million gallons.
Two seven point five.
Two seven point five and they're constructed identical, but almost twice the size. Um, and I, based on what ours looked like in two thousand and fourteen versus what theirs looked like day one, I was impressed. And ours isn't leaking like their brand new tanks are, so uh, yeah, that's unfortunate. Um, together we did a retrofit um for the seismic piping that's exiting the tank. Um, we worked with, we worked together with our engineer, um we worked on project management together as well as construction inspections. And so it was a, it was a good project, it was especially good for me because I had shoulder surgery and I was useless, but I could manage that project. And uh I think that was mostly me and um. Who was that? Yeah, Stephen, yeah, Stephen Wages, I think it was one of his last projects. Um, and the, the seismic up, upgrades brings us current standards to withstand an earthquake. Um, oh yes, you have a question?
Yeah, so that's what I remember in terms of the construction, does it have a shut off valve?
It does have a shut off valve and a shake sensor, uh so it, it will, based on levels that we set. Um, we as in Southern Rainbow, when it senses an earthquake, that valve will go, I think I have it going to fifty percent right now. Um, an operator can then log in and close it the rest of the way, if it is a real earthquake. We did have a concern about a false quake in shutting off that system. Um, we test it monthly, uh we coordinate, we coordinate with Sub uh every time we do it because we share alarms on this.
So the earthquake would set it off that there on twenty-eight, there was a pipe.
Oh, we're gonna talk about that too. You want to come up here? No, you're doing great, it's uh, yeah, we're gonna talk about that. Any questions about Mo Reservoir, the seismic upgrade, anything to add Greg? It was a fun project, contractor was a good contractor. Warehouse or corrosion control or Waco. Um, just like our Chase wellfield, the warehouse or wellfield has low pH water. It's not terribly low, but it is on the acidic side of neutral. Um, Sub was up against a deadline for optimizing their corrosion control. We talked about when, when, when the warehouse or treatment plant went in, there was talk about stripping towers and, and how we'd raise that pH. Um. Sodium hydroxide ended up being our, our, our choice based on, we use it at Chase, they use it at Thurston. Um, and so it, it helped having a common uh chemical that we're already using. Um, we coordinate on this, I order this stuff probably once a month in the summertime. Um, and it was really helpful that Sub uses the same chemical and the same strength. Because what it does for me, it allows me to maximize my orders, um us to maximize our orders, because we share the cost on this also. Um, that I can order a full load. We get that full load for the delivery, whatever's left over can then be delivered to Thurston um and top off their tanks. Uh, we built this in-house, we designed it in-house. We did almost everything with the exception of the concrete pad and adding the new electrical circuit. I think everything else we did in-house, uh side by side with Sub's group, it was a fun project. More examples, how we work together. Let you look at that for a sec.
What about security, domestic terrorism threats, things of that nature with the amount of interactive processes, interactive technology? Interactive water supply systems? How do the organizations support one another if we have a legitimate domestic terrorist threat to our water supply?
So are you thinking like a physical attack or a um?
Could be a virus in the computer system, it could be a physical, it could be anything, what, what does that look like for?
We do have firewalls that separate our two systems, we do have some commingled uh SCADA system, which is, it's how we see and control our system, I think you guys know the term SCADA. Um, we, we have some tags that, that we're able to see each other's data. Um, and we share data with each other, but it's a limited amount, um and there is a double firewall, I believe, that protects that. Um, as far as physical security, um, gosh Greg, help me out here.
Uh, I mean, we, of course, we, you know, harden all our physical security and, and have um. You know, uh, security systems reporting into the SCADA systems and alarming out to operators and twenty-four seven coverage on that. Um, and like Eric said, both our systems are uh separated uh from each other behind two separate firewall, Rainbow and Sub firewalls. Um, ours is managed by our IT group, uh it's separate from our business at work, at, at work. Uh, so that's how we manage that from a cyber, uh cyber side and then the hardening of, of facilities and the, the mon- monitoring, uh twenty-four seven monitoring.
For Rainbow, um, last month or the month before, we uh conducted an internal, actually had an external auditor come in and look at physical security. And give us a report and offer some suggestions, so something we're very aware of.
So am I off base in thinking that potentially? If there was any form of domestic threat, however, the attack. Whether it's computer system malware to try to affect our, the water supply. Am I, am I thinking wrong that that's not a possibility?
Oh, no, it was, that's been in the news too. Um, thankfully, both of our systems are very similar from what I know, that there's very little that we can do um remotely. Um, we have, as far as Rainbow, I'll speak for Rainbow, we have s- safety features that, that can't be overridden um remotely. We have physical alarms that can only be changed on site. Um, we have uh secondary backups of that, the shutdown systems that can only be uh turned off on site. So if it were to go onto alarm, it would shut the system down and for that to be turned back on, an operator has to visit the site to do it. So we do have those checks and balances, so we have those layers. Um, you might have heard in the news about, I think it was in Pennsylvania, help me out Jamie, was it Pennsylvania? Where um there's been a couple in the last couple of years where they're able to um speed up a pump to deliver sodium hydroxide, the same thing we do for pH. We can't do that um remotely, we can't turn that up. Um, and if someone were to break into the door and turn it up, we have secondary alarms that would be triggered that they would have no idea about. Unless they were previous employee or something like that.
There are smart people out there, it is a concern, but Department of Justice at the state level, Department of Homeland Security at the federal level, there are resources that can help audit us and that's part of. What Doug mentioned, we brought in some folks and I'm sure Sub is doing some of the similar type things.
Intertai exercises, um historically, we've done quite a few of these, uh as of late, we've been doing at least one a year. Um, either on a tabletop version or onsite actually transferring water. This is the thirty-first street intertime, it was first constructed right around the same time that um the warehouse or. Um, granular activated carbon plant was coming online, uh there were some concerns about. Water quality and if we'd have to shut those wells down and so warehouse or company, correct me if I'm wrong, you were involved with that.
Nineteen ninety-six.
Yeah, that, um, they actually paid for this uh, this skid and I don't have a good picture over here, you can kind of see it on the far right. And that's the ability for Rainbow to take water from Sub. Actually, it's for Sub to provide water to, Sub Rainbow to provide water to EWEB. There's some pumps here, I don't think I have another picture, you can kind of see, maybe, I don't see the pumps. Um, they have to pump the water from EWEB into the Sub Rainbow system because of prefer, uh pressure differences. This one, um, we haven't done this exercise in a number of years and because the uh existing piping. And the electric controls are out of standard, uh that we really can't use anymore. We can deliver water to, to EWEB fairly easy because it doesn't require the pumps, but we have a couple other that we, that we inter, interact with.
The Southern Rainbow systems, as we talked about, are interconnected all over the place, we, we are tied together. Connections with EWEB are fewer and at more specific points, but those are emergency backups to each other.
Lake County Fair, there's Jamie looking all handsome there, it um, since two thousand and sixteen, we partnered with Sub and uh EWEB. To uh help staff their booth, uh it's, it's pretty rewarding, you only gotta do it for a couple hours. You really get to interact with Lake County's finest uh when you're there. It might be the most popular booth at Lake County Fair, weather depending. Um, yeah, if it's something free and if it's hot, you'll see it all. Um, but it's been rewarding, uh actually, uh I did that one year and left directly from there to respond to a main break. So you'll see that in a minute.
Kudos to Meredith, she puts so much.
She does, yeah, it's, and it's, it's great, you always have enough ice, uh the customers love it. Uh, you really get a chance to interact with, you know, your customer base and might not, you might be interacting with EWEB customer. But then they ask you all kinds of questions about water, um you'd be amazed by how many people have no idea uh where your water comes from, beyond the tap. You know, beyond that, that's, I don't know. We uh, we partnered together to um. Provide public information, uh consistent messages to our customers, some examples are the green gra- green grass gauge, which is up there on the right. You might have saw those at like Jerry's or Home Depot over the years, um regional water provider broch- brochures. Tapping into clean water, your value, uh our message wants, we want our message to be consistent. And emergency preparedness, as you see in the bottom right, those um, I think they're three gallon, three gallon uh emergency preparedness water bottles.
Go ahead, how many people have their three gallon emergency water bottles, all up, ready to go? Alright.
This is some examples, uh merge response, other. Positive coliform sample like I briefly talked about and then water quality complaints. Um, this was December twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen, Christmas Day. Um, I think, I'm not sure the sequencing on this, what alarm came first, whether we got a um. A low water alarm at Kelly and then a corresponding um customer call, I'm not sure. Uh, this is on Laura Street, kind of down there by uh. Oh Shelley, or the Shelley intersection, right there.
Highland Construction.
Yeah, Highland Construction, we had uh both Rainbow and Sub responded almost at the same time. Uh, both, um, one of our operators and uh production guy from, from Sub. As well as a distribution guy from Sub, they have two people on call, one for production, one for, for uh distribution. They uh, they teamed up to isolate this leak, um and then we, we always offer to, you know, assist if we can. Um, this happened to be a Sub's leak, affected both of our systems, uh and it, it was a big one, it was a mess. You can see that's a gas line, the guy standing on the right, um there's another pipe over there, the whole top of that main came off and that was just a ten inch main. Took off, how many feet Greg, of, of roadway did it take out?
It was big.
It was huge, lifted up the whole road.
Um, all of Lori Street, I, I think the reason the response by both utilities was so sudden is because that, that was leaking so big and leaking so much water so fast. Reservoir levels were dropping so fast and the customer, because that was right in Laura Street and it completely destroyed that, that street, so. I think we were responding nearly at the same time.
Yeah, yeah, we work together and, and it's, it's pretty seamless, um we share each other's maps, you know, um it's often the case that, you know, it's like you could take care of those valves, you take care of those. Um, I can't think of a single time since I've been here during those type of events where there's ever been a, a power struggle. Um, not a single one, uh it's, it's, everyone's got the same goal and it's, it's, it's pretty nice. Here we go, ready, thirty-first street? This happened, so the Christmas happened, Christmas Day, which isn't a big uh production day. July is another story, um July is a larger main, middle of summer, luckily happened kind of in the evening. Um, I was just finishing up at the Lake County Fair. I was just finishing up at the Lake County Fair. I was going to watch the stage, watch the concert. One of my operators called me and he said, hey, we got a big leak on thirty-first Street. And my first question is it ours or Sub's? You know, and he's like, no one can tell. I was like, all right, I'll be in. So I, you know, I throw some, I don't think I threw pants on. I think you had shorts and boots on. And I drove down there and you can see on the left, that's twenty-eighth where it turns to thirty-first or thirty-first Street. And is that Y? Is that Y intersection? W? You couldn't even see the roadway. Where Marcola Meadows is being built right now, is off to your right on that left-hand picture. That water, and I'm not exaggerating, probably went a quarter mile out into that field. It was so much water. How I know that is because you couldn't drive through. I need to get to the other side to do valves. So I was going to go way up in the field with my truck, way, way, way up in the field. It's dark, can't see anything. Well, I'm in my truck and all of a sudden I feel that squish that, that, that nobody likes. So I aim left. I was like, I need to go further out. I aim left. Stride, I start going back in again and I must have hit a deeper spot because then my truck stuck and it was so far out there, like, how did you get stuck out there? But we worked together. We isolated the, we had, I think, two production guys. We had, you know, a half dozen of the distribution guys. It was like all hands on deck on that leak until we got it isolated. And then it was, you know, boiler water notice for both of our customers for the area that was impacted. Mo was offline, I think for two days afterwards. So in the middle of summertime, we couldn't use our largest reservoir. So it was a scary time. This next slide here shows in the red, you can see the reservoir levels. And I want to say those are one hour increments, those boxes. And so if you can think that we lost basically half of Kelly, so a half million gallons in an hour's time, and then you can pretty much double that or triple that for Mo and you see how Mo flatlined afterwards. On top, that's our flow rate in the system. Do you have a question?
Well, so I guess my, my question, I was looking at this and the reason I was asking about the, the shut off. Because I can understand earth movement and, you know, it'll shut off and we'll have that, that water reserve. And what was interesting about both Laura and also this, you know, Laura, well, again, like you're saying, but I do remember what you're confirming here was that pretty much lost half of your capacity within a really short period of time.
Yes.
So on twenty-eighth, here you had a shut off valve in place and all of a sudden there was just this tremendous outflow of water. And what, what I heard was that the neighbors actually kind of called up and said, hey, thirty minutes later, we've got all this water around here, you know, type of a thing. But so do the shut off valves are only triggered like with earth movement or?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, we, you know, in, in that scenario, if Mo were to just close up there, that probably would have been worse because then I'm still just isolating part of that subdivision up there, we would have shut off that reservoir. Kelly, because at least that, that Mo reservoir was helping feeding that leak. If, if Mo can't feed that leak, Kelly's going to do it. And as you see, Kelly was already at fifty percent in one hour's time. By the time we got it isolated, it would have been, you know, whole system wide, low pressure. So a lot of times you think when you see those leaks that you just want to shut them off all the way. That's not our first instinct. Our first instinct is how can we throttle it? How can we isolate this? Can we fix it live? Because when you start just cramming water down and depressurizing mains, that's a bigger issue than you have public outreach for, you know, boiler water notice. You have to notify the state. It's, it's, it's a, it's a to do, to do. On the top up there, you can see our production. Can you see how it stair, stair steps up? That's a perfect example as reservoirs falling, our system is calling for more wells to turn on. And by the time you get up to that top of the peak, it's all hands on deck. Everything is running full out. And that little extra peak on the peak is because the pressure is so low, it's able, it's able to produce more water than it probably should. Because it's not fighting against that same pressure in the, in the system. And then you can see here, it was a few hours before we got it isolated, Mo isolated, we throttled it down first and then we were able to pump it down, see what was going on. It was an eighteen inch steel main. And it's the first time I've seen a steel main break like this. It opened up like a tin can. And so there's no easy repair. You're cutting pipe, trying to find eighteen inch stuff to repair that. Anything to add to that, Greg?
Only that that pipeline is out of service now.
Yeah.
There's a new sixteen inch ductile iron pipe that took its place.
Yeah. All right, more working together. I've talked briefly about this. This is right up Doug's alley. I shouldn't have him talk about this. Or ask him to, I should say. Nineteen ninety-five, we found out that the Warehouser, did someone say something? Okay, the, the Warehouser wellfield was under the threat of contamination from a wood preservative they were using on their sites back in the fifty, sixties, whatever time. Warehouser was, was forthcoming in my understanding, building that granular activated carbon system. They took up half of our yard, put that tank in there. In return, they gave us a spot in their parking lot to park our pipe and other stuff. We'll move on with this a little faster. Oh, here we go. We got Tim Hanley on the left. That's Jamie's predecessor. Doug Keeler with that dark mustache, not so dark anymore, sorry Doug. And then that was Chuck Davis. He was the water quality manager for Sub. All three of them working together. Doug was representing Warehouser during that process. Leak detection. This is something that we did a lot of this informally as years passed. More currently, it's become more formal. This last year, we just finished right around the first of the year. Matt was able to go around and do a survey of our system. It's the second time around in the last six, seven years. You'll see there, all that red is suspected leaks. Doesn't mean we have a leak on every one of those. It means he can hear it in all those. So then we come back behind him. Listen, turn narrow down, try to find leaks, fix a leak. And then just like, for instance, just yesterday, Matt came back out and listened to a spot that we were prepared to leak and now there's no sound. And so it's, it's, it's working.
Eric?
Yes, sir.
You're kind of running long.
I'm, I'm trying. I'm hurrying up.
I don't want to interrupt your wonderful presentation.
I can finish right now. The Fifth Street Intertai, that was in one of Jamie's earlier slides. It was our historic first connection to EWEB. We're going to test that next month with both Sub and EWEB. Both crews are there. PPOS. Oh, Jamie, Jamie, you coming back up here?
Sure.
Let's let you do the PPOS one.
So just a couple more slides and then we'll open it up, send it back to the chairs for discussion. So yeah, we all know that this is coming. We've heard talk from our water quality folks that EPA is coming up with some new rules. That's going to impact some of our sources. We will have to do some treatment. Eric showed the slide as an example, the two Interstate five wells and the Sportsway well are on the same pipeline, come out to serve the same customers. We, you know, both utilities have to figure out how do we treat that water from both systems jointly. You know, two separate, side by side treatment plants is a dumb idea. So we're trying to talk about the future and how do we work together with new regulations also? I have no exciting slides for this next section. There's no, nothing fun about it. But just very briefly, our existing agreement since nineteen ninety-two has two components. It has a pricing and it has a quantity. There's a lot of other details in the IGA about how we work together on operations and repairs and all those other things we've been talking about. The price was based on what is your actual cost of production? And so we had this formula in this nineteen ninety-two agreement. Go back for the last twelve months, see how much it costs you to make water, compare how much each other's prices are. And Sub has a minimum purchase, but if Rainbow is cheaper, then Sub can buy more, but not too much more. There's a penalty because we don't want you to stress our system. And so there were some tight boundaries. It's been operationally challenging for Sub at times because that minimum you have to buy, sometimes it's still more than you need. And so the operations guys have to work with that. So that is a thirty-two-year-old headache that we're still trying to work through. Sub has not invested in the north system because we've had it covered. You haven't had to. So if you'd built your own systems, yes, you could have done it cheaper, but we've been cheaper for you until now. So based on comparing prices, it's always been the case that Sub has bought the maximum you could because price justified that according to this contract. The the quantity, again, there's formulas and how much is determined, but you know, is it a hundred and twenty-five percent price comparison, a hundred and forty percent price comparison? A lot of that's history. We're just working through it right now, doing what we have done. But bottom line is we're selling to Sub at fifty-six cents a unit. And your retail right now is two seventy-three. So we're still selling it to our, at our cost with the caveat that you are having to buy a minimum when you don't need it. So we may make some profit during those months, but for the most time, you're still getting a reasonable price, but we can't keep up with your demand for the future. And that's what your new treatment plan is going to help fix for you, for all of Springfield. Any comments, Jeff? That's the last slide.
Oh, great, great summary. And, and thank you, Jamie, as well. All, all the, there's, there's a lot of factors regarding the water pond, the water purchase agreements. And so I want to express appreciation to Jamie and Eric, who is coordinating conversations and Sub's been coordinating conversations as well about what does it look like? What are these stress points that we have? How can we, in the interim, look at operational changes to give Subs more flexibility, but still guarantee Rainbow revenue? Until such time as the new McKenzie Surface Water Treatment Plan comes online. The the issue with the water tube plant and Jamie outlined the average purchase price or average cost of water. What, what Sub's looking at from an economic perspective is the marginal cost to produce water generally. So I think the average prices worked for a good, good while, but we have so much cost pressure because of the investments that we've made in our system that we're looking at it from the lens of marginal costs, which is lower than average cost.
By marginal, you mean the cost to make that next unit of water?
Right.
Right. Well, before we move on, are there any questions about the presentations that didn't get asked yet or comments? Yeah, Mike?
Jamie, your first presentation had a lot of history there. Is that on your website or is it available or could we get a written, a written version of what you talked about?
Sure, sure. Pieces of it are in that calendar. Some of it, because we've been working on that calendar, some of this is very fresh. I need to research that history, but I can try to compile that and share that.
Great, thanks. Before you, please.
So, you know, it wasn't necessarily the presentation, but you know, the city, they've been looking at redoing Forty Second Avenue for you've got the interchange and then we also got the, the burn, you know, and so I, I, how does, every time I drive by there, I'm thinking, what are they going to do, city? I mean, it's that whole thing that they're saying, but then, you know, they've been saying it for years.
We, we just, we just shared that at our board meeting last night. The city's looking at forty million dollar project for the levee. I was in the mayor's state of the city address. We look out our window and see that levee. And so I joke and tell Ken Bogany that we'll be your warning if it's leaking through, I'll let you know, you know. So yeah, there's a levee get fixed first and then the city knows how much room it has to work with on Forty Second and how that impacts our driveway. It, it's a challenge for the city. We are definitely paying attention to the process as one of the stakeholders. Still to be determined. You know, it's multiple government agencies with jurisdiction, so.
The good news, I'll just interject, always because I'm helping with Ken on a lot of this stuff. The, the good news is that we made recently some substantial progress with the Corps, the Army Corps, and really we need them. We can't, we, we can't do anything without them.
That's, that's huge because they're the ones that are in charge.
Exactly. And we had some substantial forward movement. I'll just say, in, insofar as getting the paperwork and the documents signed and that kind of thing. So we've gotten verbal from the Army Corps, which, you know, if you've ever pictured Ken Bogany doing a jig, he was almost doing a jig. But that was huge. They haven't physically signed anything yet. But we, yes, we're going to sign. And which will just pave the way for the next steps, which are voluminous. You know, to, to, to keep this thing moving in that direction. So we're kind of happy that they at least gave us a verbal. So, yeah.
All right. So looking at the old agenda, there were, we have about a half hour left and I think we ought to respect that because who knows what any of us have coming up next. But by way of context, I would just say before we start more open discussion, you know, we've been at this, I think, more or less between the two utilities for five years now. And that doesn't sound, you know, very responsive on anybody's part. However, I will note we did have a little virus impacting all of us in a very big way. And so that's part of that reason. But again, I think we're, we're ready to move forward and I want to recognize too that for Sub, obviously a much larger organization, but you guys have multiple business lines, right? I mean, I would imagine electricity is probably number one, so water maybe second, no offense, Greg. I'm not sure. But not only that, we're only talking about maybe a third of the system. I mean, we talk about the north, the east and the, the west. So, and you know, we're partners on that. So really all automatically, this is like one sixth of what's on your table. Not to mention the other business lines you have, like the energy efficiency and some of those other things, fiber. So, you know, this is really a much bigger deal for Rainbow, I think, in whole than it might be for Sub. So I'm thankful we've been able to dedicate a lot of effort to our side and if whatever, you know, has caused all this time to go by, I think there's good reasons for it. There's a lot going on for everybody. So just kind of want to start with that, but maybe you two, Superintendent, General Manager can kind of pick us off on what we ought to be thinking about with respect to the IGA. What do we need to work on? I think, you know, we drafted and, and Sub was kind enough to let us take the start on that of sort of pulling all together. You know, we saw that, that thing Jamie put up about rates or, or quantity. It looked like it was done on a typewriter, right? I don't know if everybody's looked at those agreements or not, but they're and so there's a real opportunity there to make them better. And so we got to take a first cut at that. These two and, and all of us in the sense have been able to kind of forward that discussion as we go through. But I mean, if you guys just kind of want to lead us in that, you know, touchy subjects or big picture, whatever, we have a half hour. This is where I think we make the most progress for tonight. And everything's being recorded. Thank you. So we won't lose anything.
I'll be very brief and then I'll take it back to Jeff. You know, the presentation shared, you know, Rainbow has a boundary we live in. And, you know, so it hasn't been our goal to try to go take on operations in Jasper or some other part in the UGB. We've been happy in the north, but we do have work outside the boundary. So some of the contract discussion about where we operate is important to us to allow us some freedom, but to respect Sub has taken on the responsibility of helping the city grow. So we're trying to work through that. I, I mentioned how historically there weren't specific dates in the agreement. So that's been a bigger deal to us is how do we define what the length of the agreement's like, how often is fair to review it and allow chance for amendments without assuming that we're not around? There's no reason to work with us. You know, we're, we're a little skittish on that part. So, so those are some of Rainbow's perspectives. Operationally though, we've shared, we work together well in so many ways and a lot of that we expect to keep going. It's just some of the details about how do we provide each other water in this new regime when we're going to have a lot of wells with surplus capacity? We would love to still be able to jump in and help you on those hot summer days and having to back you up. But what's a new pricing structure? What's a new arrangement that you don't feel as trapped by is this commitment to buy that you've had? So that's kind of what we're exploring out there.
Yeah, great summary. I think I think there's a few things and I'd like to just kind of refer to the board, just the board has talked about this as well as, as well as your board. So there are a number of agreements. I think Sub proposed four new agreements and then, and then you, working with Ross, came back and said, how about two? And so we appreciate the work that, that was put in, very thoughtful. And so, um, we appreciate the work that, that was put in. It was very thoughtful and we liked the, the format. I think what we're, uh, in some ways, uh, I would say eighty percent of the conversation is, is dealing with, uh, kind of operational issues in terms of the complexity of the, of the north system. And then we find ourselves going, uh, into these what-if scenarios and then, uh, the area of unknowns. And I think, you know, we can establish something based on what we know today. But we, at least, uh, from subs' perspective, we don't know what ten years from now is going to look like. And so, uh, maybe we need to have some mechanism to, to acknowledge that. Between nineteen ninety-two and today, things changed from, I think where things were signed in ninety-two, ninety-four and where things are today. And, and I anticipate there'll be significant changes in the future. So, um, how, how do we, um, kind of acknowledge that in the, in these agreements? And we also want to acknowledge and appreciate, uh, that, um, Rainbow, uh, acknowledges our interest in terms of being responsible for the urban growth boundary in terms of how that grows out. With the exception of Rainbow's existing, uh, service territory within the city of Silver Road. One of the things that I'll just close with is that with regards to the water master plan and subs' vision looking forward, what do we need to do to serve the entire, uh, obligation to the, to the, uh, urban growth boundary ultimately? Uh, part of that includes, the assumption that we won't, won't be able to rely on Rainbow's sources because there is no agreement that those sources will exist or transferred to sub. So we assume that, or we need to look at the, the, the possibility that Rainbow says, uh, or make some decisions that are, uh, maybe have those resources go away and then we need to plan to, to serve that north system. Is that fair?
It's fair.
You're looking for certainty.
Well, you are too, and, and I'm just kind of recognizing that there's a lot of moving pieces here. And we're not trying to force decisions now when, when no one is necessarily ready. But, uh, when those decisions occur, they will have impact.
So for Rainbow, I'm looking at my fellow board members, wherever you are. Um, I've been doing a lot of the talking, so if you guys want to chip in, um, please do. If not, I'm going to bring up the T word and you already, guys have already talked about it, but termination. As we understand it, as Jamie has communicated to us, that's pretty important to sub. And so there's lots of ways to kind of define that, but I will just ask, you know, why? And, and maybe you just explained it to me and I need to be brought along a little bit more. But, um, you know, when we look at, um, our predecessors, the, the previous boards from years gone by and, and their general managers and superintendents, they crafted these agreements. And they never, the one we're operating under today does not have a hard termination date. And, um, for Rainbow, we take some certainty and comfort in that because, um, that kind of lets us know that we have a mechanism to work with sub. And so we fear that if we set some date certain, you know, in the late twenty twenties or early twenty thirties, when that date passes, we won't have a mechanism to work with y'all. And so how do we get our business done if nobody can say, you know, and, and we don't need to pull out those documents and, you know, agree and disagree on the words. You guys just work seamlessly and that's great. But I don't know that we feel comfortable that we're going to keep working seamlessly if there's, you know, not an agreement to kind of hold that fast. So, and, and I guess I'll add to that, um, you know, we always have the option to get together again like this, or maybe it's a minor thing. We can always amend jointly. And we can always, for that matter, terminate, you know, as long as it's mutual. So we sort of feel there always is that out. But I don't know realistically how we would do it when, as we saw up there, you know, the water runs through our pipe, then your pipe, then repeat once again, and then it's delivered to the customer. So it's so darn complex. That's the physical reality we're really up against.
Sure. Well, I agree. So I'm expressing my views, uh, not necessarily the board as a whole, but, at least as I see it, we're joined at the hip. Or basically forever. And, and that's fine, but I, I, I'm not making any judgment. One way or the other, it's worked very well so far and I don't have any reason to think it won't work in the future. So I, when you address a, why not a termination date? In my view, I hope we will not do stupid things. I don't see whether there's a termination date or not. I don't see a change in the coordination and working together. I, our systems are so intertwined, it's almost impractical to do that. The reason I like some termination date, and I'm not stuck on any particular date, several reasons. Then when we looked at the nineteen ninety-two agreement where there is no termination date and we're in a situation where we're going to have the treatment plant coming online, where we don't, ideally, we would not need the amount of water that we're committed to with Rainbow. I saw that and still do see it to some extent as an oversight on the part of the drafters of the nineteen ninety-two agreement of locking in future boards to that. And there's no way to exit unless there's cooperation from the other, other side. Now, let me say, I, I'm really impressed with just how good a job Rainbow has done and how well the two utilities have worked together. But I go back to that idea of trust, but verify that, uh, I don't see our interests parting because of the intermingling. Uh, and I see that as a very strong reason that even if there's a termination date, we better get on our horses very early on to either continue it or maybe continue if necessary. But I, I see, I don't like the idea of locking in future boards to a very long outside date or no date at all. I, I see a termination date, again, whatever makes sense in terms of that period of time as kind of forcing us to engage in good management. Deadlines do produce action. And, uh, if you don't have those types of things, things seem to drift for a very long time, even as circumstances change. And so from my standpoint, uh, again, whether it's ten years, whatever, from the date of the signing of the new agreement, it would make sense for both of us to have a termination date because it forces us to take a look at it. I would think you would have to get started at least two years in advance. So that, that's my thinking with respect to termination date. Uh, I, I realize as a board member, I have some responsibility to future boards to not put them in a situation where it's just hard for them to deal with the situation. I'm, I personally am, uh, very satisfied with the arrangement that we have where as, uh, different areas are annexed into the city, uh, that becomes part of sub. I, I, the other concern I have, it's not a big concern because at least looking at everything that's happened in the past, things have done, gone very well, but, um, with respect to say, to the extent that Rainbow decides to expand its service territory outside the service, outside the city limits, but within the urban growth boundary, uh, I think you have every right to do that. My concern would be that I would like to have some type of provision where, and I think you would do this anyway, but some type of provision saying that you would give us notice as to what your plans are so that we could think about, okay, how does that affect us? Particularly if at some time, twenty-five years from now, whenever we do take over, whatever your system is, that there's an attempt to try to make whatever extension you do is as close as compatible to our system as possible. Now, if you were to decide, once we gave you input saying, but please take this into consideration. Forget it. Again, that's, that's your right from my standpoint.
I'll respond on one minor point there, but it's important. But then to Jim, um, as far as, you know, trusting us to, to when you do take over an area or some part, you know, that you don't get a lemon. We voluntarily adopted your construction standards. Now, we don't have to build that way, but I mean Jamie's leadership there. So we want to honor that good faith approach, you know, in everything we do.
And, and that, again, my concern is just notice and, and at least an opportunity to give some input. Whether that you consider that that's not in your interest or not, to me, that's your right to do it. We don't have any really moral or any type of legal ground to stop you from doing that. That's the way it goes. And my understanding is that you pretty much, uh, reached what I thought is pretty close to agreement in terms of the gradual reduction in, uh, how much water sub needs to, is required to buy annually as the treatment plant comes online.
I think we've agreed to a better, um, schedule of sales to, to support sub and its operations until the plant comes along. I don't know that we've gotten to that, what you just described, yet that's still work in progress.
It is. It is intended to be a conceptually steady revenue until that time that sub's, uh, new plant is commissioned and then it will drop.
We have gotten to the point though, that North System customers have grown enough where it's almost like the water we're supplying that meets your purchase requirement is what your customers are using. So you're not having to take on any extra anyway, but we're really close to that point.
Just one other point, uh, with respect to the amount of water requiring to be purchased. But I, I suspect this is something that both sides already agree upon is that I would hope that whatever the minimum amount is, that we would cooperate with each other as circumstances change. Uh, say in the summer or whenever to help one or the other to get beyond those types of situations. But so you have some kind of provision in the, kind of the agreement to do that.
Sorry. I was just going to mention, John, I believe the, um, agreement that you were mentioning that seemed there was a bit short sighted. I believe was actually crafted with an idea which was common back then, that annexation was going to take over. And I personally lived through River Road, Santa Clara, and annexation of the city of Eugene. Um, I saw what happened when the city walked into an area and basically said, thou shalt. And I mean, there were deaths. There, I, I was completely in the middle of it. And I think that's something that has influenced the newer agreements because there's definitely neighborhoods that have no interest in annexing. And at one point, I've seen, you know, uh, historic schedules. We're just going to do a ring and we're going to do another ring and we're going to do another ring and in three years we'll have everyone annexed. Well, first you have to have the money to be able to provide the, the public service level to that, which and second of all, it's pretty clear you have to have the public support. And I think those two things aren't, I think that have influenced that, although it was just obvious at the time. I don't think you can not look beyond, or you can look beyond that now. I think it's a big factor. My property is an annex personally. And I'm, I'm not, you know, I have one vote and that doesn't really matter. But I also know that a lot of the surrounding area where I'm at, there would be zero interest in annexation. And I know that survey's been done by the city and I think they've backed out of it completely. So that changes the whole equation quite dramatically. And I think it would influence Rainbow, or it's fearful to Rainbow. Maybe I should say it's concerning to Rainbow to think that we would just sign a date and all of a sudden not everyone's annexed in. That would be a messy situation that we wouldn't even want to consider. So that's a factor, I think, that really has to get interjected into this decision-making process.
My impression, and others may know more than I do about this, uh, is that, uh, the city of Springfield is not going to annex any place without the consent of the people that will be affected by that.
But I, I, I believe you're right.
I mean, I, I mean, and I don't think there's anyone on our board or staff.
No, I, I'm not even, I'm not even saying that. I'm just saying back then, I was in the room when the city manager said we're going to annex River Road, Santa Clara. And then unfortunately I got picked to be on the team, was going to go put sewers in. And it was, I, I'll just tell you, we had one customer who we had to call the sheriff in when we dug the main line by his house because he was walking around out front with a loaded gun. You know, and that, it, it, it was, it wasn't any fun. Um, they wouldn't get it. We're not going to do that again. Right. Other issues, comments, thoughts, question, David or Mike?
Well, I, I guess I have a, I'm right there on the border. And so I have a number of friends and neighbors that, uh, and, and I know exactly what you're talking about, how they felt about that when the city approached in terms of the annexation, I think it went down in flames, whether it was ninety to ten or eighty to twenty, I don't know. But no, they didn't, they didn't want to do that. The, uh, you know, kind of coming back to, I'm having a date. And, and, um, you know, I've listened to John, uh, about this quite a bit. Uh, and I'll just, I'll just say this, that part of the difficulty is that, you know, boards change over time. And we might perceive ourselves, and I think we are fairly reasonable people most of the time. But you never know what you're going to have in, in the future. And so having something where, uh, uh, again, that we, we know that, but, you know, has some contingencies in it, I think actually personally would, would protect both of the boards and, and protect both organizations. So that just in general, I'll just say that.
Just a termination at any point clause.
As opposed to, you know, uh, no termination date. I mean, I'm, I've, I really haven't seen too many contracts like that.
Let me say, I, I don't, uh, I'm not in, in any way advocating termination at any day. I mean, I, I, for both of our interests, we need reliability. Uh, so, and again, I'm not stuck on how far out, but I would like to have some type of termination date, uh, so that, uh, both utilities, there are going to be no surprises, plenty of time to take a look at it, review it and either extend it or make tweaks to it.
I, I think the fault, the clause that was the fault was meet every five years on it and that never happened. Because this communication is how you avoid, whether you have termination dates or not, because everyone in here understands in a logical sense, there's trust. This is where we're trying to get to. But if all of a sudden we can't meet again for twenty-five years, that's the problem. I think the real key is to continue to communicate on a regular basis. And these things will, I mean, without a doubt, we all know we're reasonable people. I, I'm kidding. I know. I mean, I, I believe that. Marla, did you have something?
I was just thinking, you know, it's my understanding, our systems, the way they're tied together, at some point, we're, we're going to either, we're buying water from sub or sub is buying water from Rainbow. It's going to be happening. So I think it's really important that we have a mechanism in the contract that addresses that. And I'm, I understand why you don't want a termination date. I've negotiated a bunch of contracts in my time and they've always had termination dates, but this is such a different situation. It's so unique. I'm not advocating for or against, but I think one of the reasons why there isn't one is because it needs to continue to happen. We have to share water together the way it's all built. So.
So for the, the legal minds, is it mutually?
So for the legal minds, is it mutually exclusive to have a termination date with some kind of language that acknowledges the. Interconnection that is gonna require us to continue to work together somehow. Uh, I don't know if those are, if that's such a contradictory concept that you can't put it into one document.
Well. And I'll take one step. What I would say as far as like requirement of what you kind of started there with that that. O R S chapter one ninety on I G A says that you have to say whether there's a length or that the I G A perpetual. Right? And then it has to also specify what the termination provisions are for the parties. So that's kind of the baseline of decision making that has to be made. But how you fit the puzzle pieces around that, I think, is the policy portion of the discussion.
And to that point, it may be possible to look at certain aspects of this I G A. And have timelines associated with them, whereas all this good work we've been talking about tonight, maybe that is more perpetual. So there may be some hybrid answer.
So can there be language, legal language around this idea of. The characteristics of the termination date. That does that that it doesn't seem so, you know, harsh or finalized, but. Language around bringing everybody back together to have these conversations, what that might look like. Is is that even a possibility? Is that realistic?
Didn't the old agreement have um in place of a termination date, it had benchmarks? Um, so when Rainbow reaches a certain size, um, you know, those were benchmarks that would require. Um, so were they kind of in lieu of a termination date?
Yeah. And in fact, um, we sort of have proposed a benchmark and that being the milestone. Of the Thurston, the new Thurston plant being, you know, um significantly running and operating and everything's ready to change with respect to. Uh, water sales, you know, quantities. Um, so that's a benchmark in a sense. Yeah, Lou.
I want to probably just interject a couple of things. First of all, I I said it at the beginning. And even after a couple of hours here and I'll be breathing, I am so grateful everybody's in this room. I'm so grateful that we're having this conversation just openly and and discussing the way we are. And so a couple of things that that I've heard, which are consistent with what Rainbow feels, at least my perspective as a board member. Um, you know, our relationship is perpetual. And we're in this forever, right? Our systems are mechanically, you know, I'm thinking just mechanically tied so much. And as Jamie said, we are probably one of the most unique water systems. We collectively are probably one of the most unique water systems in the entire state. I I don't doubt that for a second. The working together, as Eric pointed out, I mean. I think there are much bigger organizations and some smaller organizations that do not enjoy the relationships or staff. And you know, when something hits the fan, boy, everybody's there and oh, it's you. Oh, no, it's you. It's your league. No, it's your league. That doesn't happen and it shouldn't happen. So with that said, I I think that. The and I'm not playing semantics, but the word termination, you know, on and and. The totality of an agreement, wait a minute, our relationship is not gonna end. It can't. It cannot end in in that sense. But I think we can get to things, you know, the superintendent, the general manager, let them start neutering on that with our attorneys. Is so a contract to purchase X number of gallons of water. You know, so you have a treatment plant coming online. Of course, you're not gonna need to buy more water, right? Well, we can address that. But I you you know what I'm trying to say? So that so that a termination date on this agreement, it does seem seemingly harsh. And it doesn't sound like it's reflecting upon how our agencies are gonna work together. Which we know personally Rainbow feels should happen in perpetuity because it has to happen. So I I think if I could put any kind of spins on or a different lens on the word termination date. Uh, words, I I think it would be that. And I think maybe maybe looking at that a little deeper. Coming up with something that's amicable and reviewing it, you know, agreeing to review. Uh, at at a set schedule to Jim's point, hey, we need to meet more often and discuss this stuff. And then, you know, if the agreement doesn't get amended by that date, you know, by the committed review date, well, then guess what? It it continues on. As it, until, until it does. So maybe it takes us an extra year. God forbid, we have another COVID. Right? Maybe it takes us an extra year to get there, but if we're working enough in advance, we should hit that benchmark. We should. And and I think so from that perspective. Uh, I think the word termination date is just, you know, it it seems omnibus uh to me and it shouldn't be.
So I want to note that it's eight oh two almost. Um, is everybody good with going another fifteen minutes? Process check? Anybody not good with it?
No more.
I'm done talking.
No more than fifteen. That's good.
Hey, John. I would just note Eric brought up the idea of benchmarks. One thing that's changed for Rainbow is when we did the visioning strategic process in twenty seventeen. We realized that we have not been shrinking like nineteen ninety two projected. We are still here. And so we need to think about things differently. And so we stopped talking about declining because that wasn't happening. And so we have lost those benchmarks. We're trying to find out what the new. Item would be to encourage periodic review, you know, and chance for amendments and some of that type of language we're trying to work out. So.
Joe.
This might be sound like a nuance, but I think it is a good example about how things can go sideways. So the agreement uh with the water purchase agreement says that Rainbow provide water sources that Rainbow has at that time. Rainbow sources have changed. So the reason why they've changed is because Rainbow has decided to add resources or change source. For a good reason, but in fact that that wasn't the intent of the agreement. And again, because we have no certainty of of. Of Sub sort or Rainbow sources in the future, we're on a track of we need more system source. So so there was this tension here where I think Rainbow felt like it was operating under the spirit of the agreement and then it went sideways for stuff.
Horrification. You said Rainbow's sources have changed, but I'm not sure what that change was. Or are you talking about from the future looking back?
We had it. We had a chase five.
Diminishing so that we couldn't meet our obligation.
Yeah, we replaced lost source, but from Sub's perspective, that was a new source.
Okay. I had some closing comments and we will to Jim's point and it's on the agenda. Um, see if there's a consensus about uh meeting again and maybe that's based in time. We pick a point or maybe it's based on a milestone and I'm not sure we can talk about that. One of my closing comments, we pretty much covered them all, but I did want to mention that last year. We have a different fiscal year than you. We start off on July first, but. We decided to communicate with our consumers about what's happening with respect to your new source. What's that gonna mean to Rainbow as we see it at that point? What we told our ratepayers was your prices are going up. And in fact, we levied a pretty hefty rate increase for the fiscal year that we're in now. And we told them that's gonna likely continue for, you know, several years. So um, and you know. I'll say the feedback was pretty good. Um, not the the negative uh we might have expected. So we took some. Took heart from that, but we just want to make you aware that, you know, we're on board. Change is coming and and. Communication to us is probably the safest way. We certainly don't want to blindside our ratepayers. Um, so there was that. Um, I looking up at what I did at the beginning there, our goals, um, we wanted to share information. We wanted to avoid getting overly detailed and and not make any side agreements or. Tie ourselves down in any way. Do you guys think we did that? Was it a success from that standpoint? Just looking for a thank you. Anybody have anything we we need to do that we didn't do or we did wrong? Okay.
Nothing that you have to do or did wrong. I'm just curious. Are there any other sticking points besides the termination? Pause that we need to think about more from from Rainbow's standpoint.
From Sub's standpoint?
Yeah, but I I'm more concerned about trying to understand. Your interests and are are there things that we should be thinking about the figure out how to sub should accommodate that?
I would kick this into the pot. Um, there has been kind of a side discussion about fixed significant assets. And so there's an opportunity here from my perspective, it's something that you sanction in an I G A, but you do. Contractually outside the I G A if there were any properties or or infrastructure to change hands. Um. So for Sub's part, you know, we kind of began an evaluation um half a year ago or so and we're looking at some things. That, you know, may be, you know, more properly owned by someone other than Rainbow. Um, so trying to evaluate those, trying to think about them strategically and that's something that we're still very much in the middle of what we're doing. So. I'd offer that.
Thank you for that. And and the the steps you've taken to communicate with the customers and Sub acknowledges that and 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 I view that as. A very big lift and a very sincere effort in terms of moving this forward. So that's that's no small. Thing that you you've done as an organization.
It was a little risk, but either they're gonna kill you now or they're gonna kill you later. So get it over with.
Um, so so, uh, yes, there have been conversations about our interests maybe outside the scope of what we originally were talking about within the I G A. And and thank you for kind of looking at those things outside the concept of the I G I I G A, but recognizing that those interests are are there. So, thank you.
Seems like there's still some hesitation on. Future purchase of water. Sub has been doing it for a long time. He's kind of. Or sick and tired of having to buy Rainbow's water, but we've tried to communicate that it is good water and it's been at a fair price. Um, we will have.
You have bailed us out.
We will still have surplus capacity in the future. So that is one of those nuances. Um, unless we have a disaster, we are not going to be needing to buy water from you. And meet our needs with one or two of our existing wells. We have surplus capacity still able to kick in and help. And so how we could make sure that we address your fears and it's our requirement more than a gift to us that we're there to back you up. But, you know, we would like some money for that, you know, so so that's still out there.
Yeah, and 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 uh at least from Sub's lens, it's it's uh. The the view that we need to be thinking broader in terms of our obligations. So uh, for example, we have concerns about PFAS treatment as does does Rainbow. Uh, if if ultimately though we as as a body, even though Rainbow's done a great job in terms of meeting water quality standards. If if there's a significant cost saved for I five and that's coming to our system. Does Sub have a role in making sure that I five is has the water quality standards associated with coming to our system? I think so. So what does that mean? I think that means that Sub needs to step in and be ready to help pay for. Whatever upgrades need to happen to to I five. Similarly, whenever there's an annexation of a street as recently uh has happened. There's existing infrastructure and typically the the city will require that the county upgrade the street before it's transferred over to the city. And when that happens, there's a moratorium on what can happen in the street. So with the agreement with Rainbow. Uh, Sub agreed to, because it's in our interest to install a new water line under that street while the annexes annexation is occurring. Uh, we're not wanting to leave Rainbow high and dry with all these obligations. I'm trying to. Recognize that we suddenly need to step up.
And you're talking about before the street improvement.
Yeah, before.
Because ideally that would be bad.
Right. So the last thing up there is um.
Got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to make a comment uh. My my position um with respect to what I've heard being on the sub board and. I think both boards are trying and both leadership teams from each organization are trying to manage their responsibilities, their commitments. Fiscally, um, you know, our concern as a board is we have this new plant coming on. We have a lot of expenditures, getting it online. Uh, we need to, where we can cut costs, we should cut costs to meet our obligations. And part of our internal dialogue was. The by having a termination date was so that. Everyone could sit down and talk about what are the next steps? There wasn't no uh aggressive harshness towards Rainbow or the services of Rainbow. When John brought that up, it was because we really do need to sit down and talk to to what's our next steps together because we know that. Not buying some of your water, we know is gonna have potentially some kind of impact. And so how do we help facilitate these processes so that it's not a detriment to Rainbow? And we can still make the decisions we have to make as a board and your board can make the decisions they have to make. Cause you have customers and we have customers and you have budgets and we have budgets. There's all of these is, you know, like Jeff told us all, we are, we are going to be intertwined with Rainbow till death do us part.
Hundred and fifty years was this quote.
Either way, we know that we're in this together.
That one didn't slip by.
So we we know that we're in this together. And so the whole purpose of a termination date was just simply so we can continue to have conversations about. How do we facilitate these impending changes that are going to come up? And so that we can work together. At some point, it's not about working. It really is with the spirit of working towards one another. It's good. It's not working towards. The harm of uh any you guys towards us or us towards you. So I just wanted to. Uh, also communicate that or reflect the spirit of those comments. We're we're around a termination day. So that we could all sit down responsibly and have this conversation because we're all elected and you owe the ratepayers and those people that elected us. Uh, to be prepared to provide these answers.
So putting on one of these meetings is a lot of work. Of course, the next time we do it, we won't have as much background or system information, but. What are folks' sense or should we and if we should, then when might we? Um, six months quarterly, based on a milestone, maybe when something happens. Um, maybe a decision about termination. Um, I don't know. I I'm open for ideas. Or maybe we could just label it and say, you know, we'll keep it uh in our awareness and make a decision when it feels right.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna toss out, of course, I want to defer to the superintendent general on what these guys think. Um, and they're the ones that are dealing with work. They bring it back and forth and we're trying to chisel away at this. Um, maybe in six months, maybe every six months. We we meet twice a year. And and of course, tonight's meeting, the majority of it was all the history and the background and all that. Uh, I'm pretty sure we could. Give these two, like their staff, more time to kind of chip away at these agreements back and forth. And have a little bit more substance to bring. I think six months is a good benchmark and if it's not twice a year, honestly, that's terrible. Um, I've floated out there as an idea. I think quarterly is probably too frequently. It's not really giving you guys a lot of time to get a lot of work done. Cause let's face it, there's a lot of work done. Um, I think once a year might be too infrequent. Um. But yeah, six months seems to be a sweet spot in my mind. I throw that up for everyone else to digest.
You have sort of a motion and sort of a second. So I don't think we're looking for a vote. Um.
Sort of a head nod.
Yeah, that. What about you guys? You do all the work.
In six months, we might actually have an answer from E P A on PFAS. And then we could meet, be talking about joint facilities or whatever. So, yeah.
Uh, there there will be some milestones. I I think that uh. Within the context of trying to. Have a clear understanding of what the interests are and having having movement towards an ultimate agreement. I think. I think meeting twice a year this year is is a great idea. And then we can revisit how the frequency uh after that. Um, I I do think that we need to kind of have collective understanding and and this has been a great opportunity. I want to. Um, again, express appreciation to Rainbow for requesting this meeting. I think for the next meeting, Sub's on the hook for. Uh, the food and the and the the lift because you all, yes. You all did a great job tonight and I wanna I wanna acknowledge that.
There's heat over that food and there's covers. You guys should take it all.
And and just speaking of the E O C, this room is a public room. I'd be happy to grab this because it's, I think it's terribly convenient. You know, geographically, it's terribly convenient. I'd be happy to grab this because it's, I think it's terribly convenient, you know, geographically. It's terribly convenient for everybody. And it clearly suited our needs here with all the food and the space. So I mean, I'd be happy to always line this room up. If that's, but you know, it came into my head originally, and I'm glad you said something. I was thinking for the next year or two, every six months, and then maybe address a little more frequently after that. As as things, as we get closer to twenty twenty-seven, if the need's there.
Oh, I see.
That's where my brain was really.
Oh, was the update on?
Right, with a collective, you know, head nod from the group, we can always, we don't have to be in stone to do every six months.
Maybe six months from now and then reevaluate.
Right.
So question for superintendent, general manager, you guys got what you need for tonight out of this meeting? Is there anything specific you want covered? And I want to recognize we're already two minutes overtime on. So are we good? I think we are.
As well, you wanna see it loudly?
At least we know enough to go talk to our attorneys now.
I got all those heaters. And I'm gonna adjourn the Rainbow meeting.